Yeah, but the pressure went down.
That's a flyer, it's a trip. So you think it's a flyer or a trip?
Flyer, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know.
If you're gonna do something locally, right, and you're on other medications, a good example would be, certainly with the apart medication, oral pressure medication, things like that, or your diabetic. There's an older, it's called prohydromallate, or CTM for short, it's easier to remember. And you talk to the pharmacist, Walgreens, or wherever, and they'll take you right to the out. It's a four-hour tab, it only works.
That's what I would like to have that then. Sign you up for that idea for that. I'll take a cocktail of CTM.
From here to here.
Okay.
So.
Very much so.
And what's really nice, especially with older people and people who have other medical conditions, doesn't interfere with their medications at all. As a matter of fact, the medication gained fame when it was originally introduced because it was what was in the original B-10 kits, to help reverse keeping that from, from smoking and all that stuff.
All right, six o'clock. Wow, it's so strange not to have anyone here.
All right, I guess we will call the Thursday, January 2nd, 2025 council meeting to order at 6:00 PM. We'll call, all councilors are present. And Counselor Smith will be sharing the invitation with us this evening.
If everybody would please join me.
Microphone on.
One more?
Yep.
If everybody would please join me in the attitude of prayer. We pray, pray for our country at all times, that all citizens are safe, healthy, and happy. We pray for wisdom for all those who guide and govern. Help this government body in every situation to know and to do the things that are right and just with soundness of judgment and making vital decisions. We pray for the peacemakers, that the Holy Life-Giving Spirit may ever dwell in their hearts, and the barriers of fear, suspicion, and hatred may fall. This we pray to the Holy Father. Amen.
Amen.
Now to rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And item number four is the swearing-in of elected officials. So we have two officials being sworn in this evening, Counselor Watson and Counselor Smith.
Okay, if you could stand up and raise your right hand. Okay, after I say aye, I'm gonna pause and I'm gonna say your names. And then I'll say a little bit, and then you'll just repeat after me, okay? Aye?
Aye.
Aye, Jody Smith.
Paul Watson.
Do swear that I will.
Do swear that I will.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
And of this state so long as I shall continue a citizen thereof.
Say that one more time.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So long as I shall continue a citizen thereof.
As long as I continue to be a citizen thereof.
So help me, God.
So help me, God.
I do swear.
I do swear.
That I will faithfully discharge.
I will faithfully discharge.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As a city counselor.
As a city counselor.
For three years.
For three years.
For the City of Caribou.
For the City of Caribou.
According to the Constitution and laws of the state.
According to the Constitution and the laws of the state.
So help me, God.
So help me, God.
Thank you.
Okay, please put the date on the top line and sign here.
Congratulations, guys.
Okay, date the top line and then sign where it says.
Date here?
Yes, please.
One.
One, two, twenty five. Yes, sir, thank you.
Can't back out now.
No, it's done.
You're sworn.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Paul, welcome.
Thank you.
Looking forward to working with you.
As do I, everybody here. See if we can't put some of these preconceived notions to the side and move forward.
All right. Okay, so next on the agenda is the election of the council chairperson and/or mayor and deputy mayor for 2025.
You want, Penny, you want nominations?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll nominate Mayor Boma for mayor again this year.
I second it.
I nominate Jody Smith for mayor for 2025.
You second on that?
But it doesn't need to be a second.
Okay.
No, thank you.
That's exactly how I like to feel.
Okay, take one and pass it down, please.
Sure.
Thank you, I'm sorry for the cough. Oh. Got a couple? Okay, there it goes. Oops, there you go.
You voted twice?
Can I vote twice?
No, you can't.
Oh, twice, you're a cheater.
I wasn't noticed. You wouldn't notice?
You can start it over. And I have enough to go to start it over.
Look, she did that just in case.
Can you get around that flower?
No, I cannot.
Nice to know.
We'll be moving them after the meeting. Christmas, we'll take down Christmas.
Welcome in. There's not any seats. No chairs available. Standing room only.
Four votes for Counselor Boma and three for Counselor Smith.
Congratulations.
Thank you. It is an honor to serve as mayor again this year.
So now we have to, do we nominate also for deputy mayor?
Yes.
I will nominate Joan Terrio.
I nominate Jody Smith for deputy mayor for 2025.
Any others? There's seven this time. Pass it down.
Thank you.
It's Paul.
Thank you. Thank you.
And we have four for Jody Smith and three for Joan Terrio.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Mr. Deputy Mayor?
Okay. So next on our agenda is public forum. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak? Okay, moving right along. So now, item number seven is bid openings, awards, and appointments. And our first item of business is the drawing for the 2025 City of Caribou Dog Licensing Award. And is this my big bucket of licensees? All right.
I thought it was popcorn or something.
It's my popcorn.
Okay, it is going to Claire Randolph. All right, Trudy. Dog's name is Trudy. So congratulations, Claire. So Claire will be getting, it's a $50 gift certificate, I believe, for veterinary services, correct?
That's awesome.
Great, congratulations. Okay. Item number seven B is on page six of your packet, and that is the appointment of city administrative officers. So we have several city positions that are, need to be appointed by the council, and so we can go down through each one of these. So, and I guess, do we need to vote on each one of them separately, or can we move the slate on these?
It's up to you. You can move them as presented, or you can, we can choose.
Okay.
Motion to move the slate.
Second. Motion second. Discussion. Bagley?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Lovewell?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Terrio?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Oh, seven B.
Yes. Okay, and item seven C is the approval of administrative appointments. And we have three administrative appointments. That would be Christina Drinkle for deputy city clerk, Holly Duty for deputy treasurer, and Gary Markey for the acting city manager, should our city manager be unable to be here.
Move to approve as presented.
I second it.
Moved and seconded, further discussion. Bagley?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Lovewell?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Terrio?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, item seven D is the appointment of members to committees and advisory boards. These start on page eight of your packets. And so what we can do is just go down through, and we'll start with the Board of Assessors, because we don't have anyone that applied for the Airport Advisory Committee. And that's something we'll have to think about. Are we gonna just put that back out, Penny?
Yep.
Or just leave it open? Okay. Arustic Waste Solutions, Ken Murchison had applied, and that was the only application and the only seat. For the Board of Assessors, it looks like.
John has said that he will return. I don't, did you get his back yet?
You didn't get an application back? I suppose.
He has said he will, and I've sent him his application.
So do we wanna wait on that until we actually have the application?
You can knew either one.
Okay, I mean, I'm okay with voting for it, if you know it's coming in.
What are the wishes of the council?
So, all these boards here, if I read this correctly, there's, there's no.
There are a couple. So I think we still need to approve them.
These ones down here, I'm just saying.
Do we still, I think we still need to approve them, though.
Yeah, I'll prove them up here, but there's no contention.
Yes.
So I'll move to appoint to the citizens' boards as presented.
Can I point something out before?
Well.
On page nine, there's an action to take care of all of them that aren't competed. Is that what you're trying to get to?
Oh, okay, I didn't.
But I would, I would like to.
You wanna do the competed ones first?
Yeah, there's one that I would like to discuss. So if we could do the Cary Medical Board of Directors.
Well, then we should just do them individually.
Yeah, let's just do them individually, because there's one I'd like to talk about. Okay.
I'll start with the Arustic Waste Solution. Or Airport Advisory Committee?
There's no one. We don't have anyone.
We don't have one on that one.
No.
But at the bottom of page nine, you have.
Okay. I'll make a motion, we appoint John Weeks to the Board of Assessors for a three-year term.
Got a second?
Second.
Okay. Second, discussion? Bagley?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Lovewell?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Terrio?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Next.
And the next one is the Cary Medical Center Board of Directors.
So I'll make a motion, which one did you have the concern with?
I wanna talk about the development committee.
Okay, that's fine. I'll make a motion, appoint Jane White McCall, Carl Flynn, Neil Griffith, and Doug Ford to the Cary Medical Center Board of Directors for a three-year term.
Second.
Okay, we got a second, further discussion. Bagley?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Lovewell?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Terrio?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. The next one on the agenda is the Caribou Development Committee, and I wanted to talk about this one in terms of the necessity to even have this committee any, any longer. You know, it was discovered recently that the Caribou Economic Growth Council really performs the same tasks as the Development Committee. So I feel like at this point, it's kind of almost like a duplicate committee and probably is no longer needed, so what are the thoughts of the council?
I'll make a motion to dissolve the CDC due to the fact that it's pretty much a duplicate of the Caribou Economic Growth Council.
I second it.
I think we would need an ordinance for that.
Yeah.
You do, okay.
For starters, but may I inject? I agree, there's some overlap there, and I can see the point where you'd want to. But the problem that I'm seeing from looking at both groups is that there are some stark realities that are completely different, and those will have to be incorporated correctly to make sure that we don't lose that service. That would be my only consideration.
I agree with that.
Otherwise than that, I, I agree, I mean, even they recognized that they probably need to merge. I think it'd probably be beneficial for us, you know the rules about it better than I do, but to just kinda let that go and let them forge their own alliance so that they don't drop the things that are important that we may be missing here at this level.
I have a question, Penny. So in terms of that, and you said we would need an ordinance, I know there were some committees that we did get rid of last year, so can you explain the difference?
Well, those were council committees.
I see, okay.
Like the Development Committee has like a chapter in our ordinance.
Okay, so then we would put it on the next agenda?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect.
So, have to introduce an ordinance at the next, at the next meeting? Meanwhile, do we still have to vote? The committee's still, the committee's still active?
Yeah, the committee's still active, and there's, there are an active discussions with CEGC to figure out how to merge those functions. I, I mean, I, whatever the council wants to do, I think we ought to let that play out.
I agree. The only reason why I suggest that it would play out, let it play out, is because CGC, did I say that correctly?
CEGC.
I do the same thing every time.
I know, sorry. Little just likes it with those letters. They're intertwined with Northern Maine Development Committee, and they're, that's a lot of strings. And I would, if we're gonna do this, and again, you know, it seems that they overlay along, I would wanna make sure that we don't burn bridges that we have to go back to later on.
Oh, yeah, no, I agree with that, but I think that if the Economic Growth Council can perform the task, and it sounds like they were even thinking about adding a couple of new members to their council.
Yep.
I think that they would probably be able to, to take care of those little pieces that the other group was working on, and, you know, I, I just think that it's, is something that we really need to strongly consider.
And maybe some of those members would be willing to come and apply for that membership onto that committee as well.
That's what I was thinking, too, yeah.
So that, looking at you some of that, because they have some really smart people and some really.
Well, and it's, it really is a different, it's a really different skill sets. And that's, that's what I observed in being involved in both groups. They have on the Development Committee, you have, you know, really kind of the, the business representatives in, in the community, all coming together to have vision for economic development and all that. CEGC historically has managed loans, that's all they've done. In recent history, I think in the past, they took a more active role in economic development, that's why economic growth is in their title, and I think they wanna get back to that. But I think if we, if we let this process play out and let them find their own way, I think we, I think we're gonna get.
A better hybrid.
The best solution, the best outcome, to let them figure it, figure it all out, and then we'll have one entity that is going to do those, both, both those roles, and it gives it great strength to bring those two skill sets together. Because CEGC, they're like loan officers, bankers, real estate people and that.
And business people, actually, two business people.
And they know that part of the business.
At least, at least two.
Anyway, that, that's my thought, but it's definitely worth looking at.
Yeah.
I believe that the two could merge.
I don't see, I don't see them merging personally, I don't.
Yeah, they might not, we'll see.
Yeah, and I, I don't know that that's even the wishes of a lot of the people on the Economic Growth Council, I'm not speaking for them, but it's just from.
So we leave this alone, I would have to have ordinance drafted for the next council meeting, then that's gonna, then we'll have to introduce it at the meeting, so the earliest we could do this would be potentially at the end of January.
Right, exactly.
Because we'd have to introduce it.
Correct.
At the public hearing.
It'll take two meetings before we can.
Two meetings to do it.
Yeah.
I don't know how we, just leave this alone then?
I wanted to ask another question on that, though, while we have this on the table, but just Penny, maybe you could explain, because I wasn't quite aware, and I know you did send out some information, but the CEGC is actually built to do some of the same functions, is, is my understanding, is that correct? So what are, I think that maybe, because I'm on the EGC, and I apologize, and I didn't know that, too, but what are some of the things that, that they are, were created to do that we haven't really known?
So they were built from what was left of the Caribou Chamber of Commerce and Industry.
Got you.
So, and in their mission statement, it does, and I didn't print that off for today, but it talks about assisting the manager, city manager, and the city's economic and community development director, which of course we don't currently have one, with economic development tasks in the city and to-do loans. During my time on the board as an ex-officio member, it's mostly been about the, you know, creating loans for gap funding for businesses that are, you know, need to grow or to establish themselves in Caribou. And most generally, as Councilor Watson said, they're also working with NMDC on a loan there, so this is just kind of gap financing for them. So that was kind of my knowledge of what they did, and I didn't take the time to really fully understand that, because I was just kind of reacting to what I was seeing, which is in our meetings to talk about loans.
Yeah, right.
And broadband, you know, at the time that I started. And then, even though the city manager always give a report, you know, about economic development activities. And it wasn't until really this whole conversation got started between the Development Committee and the Caribou Economic Growth Council, that I started like getting out all the old files and reading, okay, here was the history, here is their mission statement, and then I'm thinking, okay, well, now I seem to have a little bit better understanding of maybe what that committee could be doing, and maybe we were taking advantage of that.
Sure, I mean, it sounds like there was a little bit of a missed opportunity, but we know, so.
Now we know.
Yeah, well, and I was, I was created for that, so it's not like creating something else, something new, or something that already exists, so that's kind of nice to be able to take full advantage of that, so.
And hopefully, you know, regardless of where this goes. Both groups identified, I mean, I was there with both of you when they were talking, both groups identified the need to create, I don't wanna call it a hand-holding process, but some sort of process to take, you know, startups and kind of walk them through a scenario to make them more successful. And I don't think either group does that effectively now, not because they don't want to, I think they thought they were stepping on each other's toes, that was my interpretation while, while I was, you know, sitting there. So hopefully, you know, that can come around and that fragile piece can be saved and even improved on, ideally.
Okay, so do we wanna?
So we have a motion on the table, right, we need to dispose of that by a vote, I guess?
I'll, I'll remove the motion.
Or we can just remove the motion.
Okay, so do we wanna just table that committee for right now until we figure this out?
Sure.
So we don't need a motion for that?
No. Do we wanna just move the rest of the slate on the rest of those now?
So Counselor Terrio was the one that made the motion.
Oh, she made the motion? Okay, I'm sorry.
Remove that motion.
Okay.
So has there been a motion made yet? Because I disagree with, I think with the mayor said about moving on, let's, let's go ahead and appoint these officials, because I think this is gonna take a while to play out, so they don't want, no one upsetting the processes and everything. Troy is the chairperson currently, and we don't wanna discourage them by sending some kind of a mixed signal that we don't want them.
Oh, I don't think it's that, it would just be until we know what we're doing to not.
So they would continue as they are now? I mean, obviously, those are the people who are, you know, their terms are ending, so we would just continue them until we make a decision?
I mean, we can continue them until we make a decision, but I think right now, until we decide if we're gonna have the committee or not by vote, then there's no sense in them starting the committee until we decide if it's gonna be a committee or not.
Yeah, I just, I disagree with that approach, so I, I move that we, that we approve the entire rest of the slate, including the nominees Troy Haney and James Nelson to the Caribou Development Committee.
Well, I think we should just deal with that one first and then deal with the other ones.
Okay, that's fine. You can do it that way. So the motion then is amended to say that I move to appoint Troy Haney and James Nelson to the Caribou Development Committee for, each for a three-year term.
Further discussion? Bagley?
Aye.
Kelly?
No.
Lovewell?
No.
Smith?
Aye.
Terrio?
No.
Watson?
Aye.
No, motion fails.
On the remainder, I'll make a motion. To appoint, I'll, I'll, I'll read one anyway. Appoint Erica Raymond to the Caribou Hospital District Board Trustees for a three-year term, Mary Pratt to the Caribou Housing Authority Board of Commissioners for a five-year term, Heather Hale and Carol Blan, Carol S. Blanchard to the Library Board of Trustees for a three-year term, Mark Draper to the Caribou Riverfront Development Committee for a three-year term, Kyle Corrigan and Casey Pore to the Recreation Commission for a three-year term, Jay Cam to the Caribou Utilities District for a three-year term.
I second.
All right, a motion and a second, further discussion? Bagley?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Lovewell?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Terrio?
I should abstain on the Caribou Hospital District, but because she's the only one there, and we're, we are voting as a slate, I will vote aye for.
Okay, yep, okay. Watson?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, so that takes us down through.
That's gonna be on.
No, but it's in the next set. So then we're going on to Caribou Utilities District next, I believe.
Is there more, they have more open positions than?
So what?
Oops, I lost my page.
Number 10, number 10, Arustic Waste Solutions, and I will be the board trustee.
Arustic Waste just has the one, is that correct?
It has, yeah, and we have a citizen number, and then we also have a city council number, and these have to be appointed every year.
Oh, I got you.
And then the manager is the alternate, but they're only one-year terms, so we have to go on to the. Counselor Morrell was the counselor who was on the board previously.
Does anybody, anybody on, oh, we have to do this this evening, right?
Yeah, because they have, we, it's just a one-year term.
Does anybody, oh, I'm willing to do AWS if there's any other.
No, that's fine.
If anybody else has.
We'll take you.
I mean, I don't know. That's real okay, right?
It's one Friday among the meetings. It's one Friday among the meetings.
Good breakfast, too, right?
Well, wait a minute then.
Wait a second, is there breakfast? Wait a second, okay.
We're starting fighting now, huh?
I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
Fighting over food.
I move to appoint Ken Murchison and Jody Smith and City Manager Penny Thompson as the alternate member to the Aristic Waste Solutions Board of Directors, each for a one-year term.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion? Bagley?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Lovewell?
Aye.
Smith?
Uh, well, I'm going to abstain from that.
Terrio?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
I feel like it's a great idea.
Okay, so now we have the Nylander Museum Board of Trustees.
I'll refuse myself from this.
Okay, yep, absolutely.
I'll make a motion to appoint Jason Gillis and Dale Hagelstein to the Nylander Board of Trustees for, each for a three-year term.
I guess they're not both three-year terms. That's what I had in my memo, but Peter's memo is different than that.
This says, yeah, both for a three-year term. Yeah, I thought it was three-years term.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was pretty sure it was three-years term.
They're all three-years.
Yeah, I think that it is.
Unless somebody, unless somebody quits. I don't think it was that anybody quit.
Right, after the initial, and that's exactly what happened is the board got canceled and then he got to see the stagger, so I think that's why that's in that letter.
Yeah, I bet you're right.
The stagger after the initial.
Right.
Okay. Okay, so we got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Further discussion? Bagley?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Lovewell?
Aye.
Smith is abstaining. Terrio?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay. Now, what are we missing? I think that's it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Who we have for appointments, we have some boards without applications.
And those will just keep being open, and if somebody comes along, okay, perfect. Are those on the website?
I will update them.
Okay, perfect.
When does they, you're going to remind me, A W S? I'll let you start since the meeting starts.
Yeah, so Mr. Draper, who is the general manager at A W S, will bring a packet here the week of the meeting, and he'll put it in your box so you can pick it up. And he's very good about emailing, like, when the meetings are and everything, so you will not forget.
Okay, that's something, it's a new thing.
But if I get there and I don't see you, yes, I'm going to text you. If you're not coming, then I have to vote, so, otherwise I can just chill out and eat my breakfast.
Absolutely.
Okay, all right, so next on the agenda is item number eight, under New Business and Adoption of Ordinances and Resolutions. Eight A is a discussion of possible action regarding the 2025 council meeting calendar, and it's on page 11. So according to our city charter, we should conduct regular council meetings at least once every month. Additional special meetings, work sessions, or emergency meetings may also be convened in accordance with main open and public meeting laws and the Caribou City Charter. So some dates to keep in mind, and I'll just kind of read these out. For the budget adoption schedule, we have a draft budget to the city council by January 15th, budget public forum by February 15th, final budget to the city council by March 1st, and a public hearing and vote by the third Monday in March, which would be March 17th, 2025. So at this point, we do need to set the January meetings. What are the wishes of the council?
Oh, we're not setting the whole year. We're just setting January.
Yeah, we have three.
Is that what the suggested action is?
Mm-hmm.
And then at a later point in January, we'll decide.
So what we typically do is, I'll meet with the, the mayor and deputy mayor to find
out, like, setting the calendar. So if their dates at work don't work, we can get the calendar set up and back to the council to go.
So we're just, I'll make a motion.
Probably will have it for the next meeting. I mean, that's how it usually goes, but we need to get a couple of meetings because we have budget stuff, so we need to make sure we have meetings set up in January.
I'll make a motion that we set the regular city council meeting Monday, January 13th, 2025, and Monday, January 27th, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. in the city council chambers.
Okay, further discussion? Bagley?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Lovewell?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Terrio?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, next is item 8B, Discussion of Possible Action Regarding the Collection of Property Tax Prior to the 2025 Commitment. This is on page 12 of your packet. This is something that we talk about each year. It is proposed that the council authorize the tax collector to accept payments of property tax prior to the 2025 tax commitment date. Main state statute provides that cities may authorize prepayment and pay interest on the payments at a rate not exceeding 8% per year. Municipalities are not obligated to authorize the payment of interest on taxes prepaid. The municipality is obligated to return any excess money paid over the final commitment amount. So what are the wishes of the council?
I'll make a motion to authorize the tax collector to accept early payments of 2025 property taxes with a 0% interest rate applied to any prepayment amounts.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion?
Quick question on the, so they can make the, is this the one where they make the equal, a person to make equal payments and does not get interest on?
That's the next thing.
Oh, that's the next one.
But this sets the stage for that one.
Okay.
Because we have to authorize them to collect the property taxes prior to the commitment, and then we authorize them to have, like, tax.
And, and there's no, and a 0% applied?
Yeah. Well, maybe it's a couple of.
I make this pitch every year, but I'm not going to support this because I think it's unfair for us to charge, like, 8% interest on past due taxes and then turn around and, and only pay 0% for people who pay ahead. Something I've been trying to fix for the last three years. It's just a, it's an unfairness in how we do business. That's all.
I mean, is that a motion?
No. No, a motion's on the table. I'm ju, I'm just, in the discussions, I'm providing my rationale for why I do not support it. At 0%.
Further discussion? Bagley?
No.
Kelly?
Aye.
Lovewell?
Aye.
Smith?
No.
Terrio?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, item 8C is a discussion of possible action regarding manager authorization to approve treasurer warrants, and that is on page 13. It is proposed that the city manager, Penny Thompson, be authorized to approve the city treasurer's warrants for the 2025 calendar year. The city charter already authorizes the manager to be the purchasing, purchasing agent for the city. However, main state statute requires an annual vote of the municipal officers to authorize warrant approvals pertaining to wages and benefits or dis, uh, dispersment of state fees. If authorization is not granted to the manager or other designated municipal officer, then the full council will need to approve all wage and benefit warrants. This would mean the council would need to approve each payroll.
That sounds fun.
Well, in that case, what are the wishes of the council?
I'll make a motion, we authorize the city manager to approve all treasurer warrants in 2025.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second. Further discussion?
I do have a question. It's related to this, I don't think it'll impact the vote. However, do we have a procurement policy for the city of Caribou, a purchasing or procurement policy as purchasing agent?
Well, we set a budget, and in the budget process, the department has come forward with what they have for requests to spend for the year. Our, our charter does, I think it's in the charter again, like, when I have these gotcha questions at the meeting, I think it's in the charter.
Well, let's defer, we'll take it offline then.
About how the city manager can move, um, like, money in a department, like, so say your light bill is over by $10, but your sewer bill is under by $10. City manager can say, okay, you're fine because your net in your department is fine. However, the council would have to, to, you know, if we were going to say, okay, well, we're not going to pave this, these roads this year because River Road fell in or something. I mean, that's happened. I mean, I don't, I, that's about the, that's one of the times I can remember the council had to vote to, like, take money from something and put it into something else, you know?
Yeah.
The city manager can't do that, but the council can.
The question was specific to the duties and responsibilities of, of the manager as a purchasing agent. I'm just wondering whether we have, as a city, have a procurement policy that goes with that authority?
I do not believe that there is a, like, a formal procurement policy.
Yeah.
There's just different statements within the charter about that.
That's what I thought. I couldn't find anything. I wanted to ask you. It's related, so, thank you.
All right. Are we, further discussion? Bagley?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Lovewell?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Terrio?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item 8D, Discussion of Possible Action Regarding Authorization to Provide a Tax Club for 2025. That's on page 14. So the tax club allows for persons to participate in a program whereby their 2025 tax commitment will be divided into 12 equal monthly payments, and the participant will pay this estimated tax accordingly. Once the 2025 commitment has been made, the final payment on their actual 2025 commitment, the difference between their 2024 commitment versus their 2025 commitment will be adjusted for their December payment. Participants will also not incur interest on their account for the months of October, November, and December as part of the program. Many taxpayers find this type of payment program beneficial, especially the ability to pay their last three payments absent interest on their account. So what are the wishes of the council?
Motion to authorize a tax club for 2025 is previously established, providing for 12 equal payments on the accounts of tax liability with no applied interest in October, November, and December for club participants.
A second.
All right, a motion and a second. Discussion?
Yes.
Yeah.
I agree. I'm not a fan of the 8%, but I think that's, these two are bottled up together. This is far more important than fighting over the 8%. I think if we want to take on the 8%, that we do that at a later date. But financially, for our community, this needs to be guaranteed, because I can think of a lot of homes where this is the number one pressure being applied.
I agree. And I also think that if people need to make interest on their money, they can just put it in another format. If, if that is their goal, we're not really a lender, it's not our, our job to be paying interest. Obviously, when, when we're a collector of money and somebody is late, they're, we're going to charge interest. But if they want to make money on their, on their money, they would go to a financial institution to do that. So that would be my rationale on that. But I do, I agree wholeheartedly that this is good for people who need to be able to budget a little bit better or, you know, have the full year and not have interest growing in those last three months. So I think it's good for the community.
Yep, no, absolutely. Any further discussion? Bagley?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Lovewell?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Terrio?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay. Okay, item number nine, these are first-read items for upcoming city council meetings, and 9A is a discussion of city council priorities for 2025. So every year, we do typically give the city manager kind of a list of our priorities. In the past, we did that with kind of a big matrix spreadsheet, got a little, little crazy and hard to, to look at and navigate sometimes. If I remember correctly, last year, I think we just sent kind of our top three priorities, and that seemed to work a little bit more efficiently. So is that something people would like to try to do this year as well? I think so. Yep.
They already sent mine.
Yeah, if we just send, and I, you know, you had already sent something out, so if everyone could just send manager Thompson your top three priorities.
I thoroughly agree with this.
Can I get an example of what you're talking about?
Yeah, absolutely. So, one of your priorities could be, okay, one of mine was the Collins Pond Project or the Caribou Mill Pond Project.
Specific things.
Yeah, it could be a specific thing, but it could be something that's more general too. You know, it could be...
So like, creating revenue streams outside of the normal box? You could, or is that like, I'll give you an example. I've been researching this. We have some interesting properties here, okay? Not trying to take up any time, I want to make this very quick, and then you can tell me if I'm close or not close. This building, the fire department, the public works guys over there, they're all flat roofs. We're hurting for cash. If we were to create an immediate revenue stream, we could look into the solar panel project for cities and municipalities, which in turn, if we were to put that on top of the roof, would defer the cost of our electricity. Now, based on what I've seen number-wise, it looks like we would generate far more than the building could use. That in turn could be sold to the electric company, and that money brought back to the city and used as a deferment on taxes. We also own property outside what we consider the DOT compact zone in old areas that are brown. And it's very hard, as you know, to get money and grants for that. However, the solar project does not require us to punch the ground and create a violation. So therefore, if we were to put up our own solar field, you know, look into that. But the parameters that I've read, according to the state, you know, benefits, there's a possibility that that in itself could help become a generating revenue stream, something that we'd only have to be involved with once. The panels are good for 25 years, and the income that comes off that could be used to defer, you know, fund projects that we don't have money for as well as defer our tax debts, you know? So is that, how do you want that? You want that that big, or do you want it that small?
I mean, you could say you, a solar project, municipal solar project, something like that. Or manager Thompson could even send a list of some of the priorities that have been kind of things that have been in the forefront in the past several years too, just to give people an idea of some, some different initiatives that we've been looking at. But you could certainly have that as one of yours, for sure.
Because I just, you know, I mean, I think it's a good way to go, because I'm looking at, you know, you're always constantly thinking of bringing in money into your community. I don't want to hang solar panels off everything, and I sure as heck don't want to disturb, I don't wanna hang solar panels off everything and I sure as heck don't wanna disturb, call it what you will, you know, the caricature of when you're looking at our community, but I think it is beneficial to put them in some places where we could reap the monetary reward.
So do you want to just...
I'll, I'll kick it back and forth.
I just made a note to send a list of these.
That's perfect, and then we can all give our top three, send them in, and then she can generate a list for us and then we can go that way.
Sure.
Perfect.
Thank you.
And it really just gives us a way to guide our thoughts through the meetings over the next several months. It's not necessarily hard and fast, we're gonna do these things, it's just kind of the priorities that we would like to see, you know, something happen with, so. Perfect, thank you. Okay, and discussion of city council member appointments to city council committees and liaison roles is item 9B. With that, I know some folks have already sent in their requests to manager Thompson, but anyone who hasn't done that, if you could do so, and if you look on page 16, uh, actually, it really starts on pages 17, 18, and 19, those are the different committees that we have that we ask councilors to participate in. I guess they go all the way through, what, page 21?
Well, we have, so I have...
Oh, those are duplicates, I think.
Well, I have one here from last year and then I have a blank one, so if people wanted to fill out blank ones...
Yeah, I know, I, no, I was looking at these, oh, I see, I was looking at the blank ones, I was looking at these pages in the back.
And there's also, there's copies of them that were filled in from last year. And then I made, like, a cheat sheet of which one's councilor Morrell was on, if people wanted to stay with what they had and if someone wants to do something with that.
Yeah, so I think if everyone could just send their...
Before the ninth.
Kind of requests before the ninth, that would be great.
Councilor Morrell in 2024 was on the Cariboo Housing Authority Board of Commissioners, Aristic Waste Solutions Board of Directors, the Labor and Leadership Committee, the Municipal Voteings Committee, and was a city council representative to the facade improvement grant.
And I'll do my best to get people placed where, as the requests come in, and we'll go from there, so we should have that by the next meeting. Item number 10 is reports and discussion by mayor and council members. So typically, what we'll do is just kind of start on one end of the table and work our way down, and councillor Watson, we'll give you the honor of going first today.
Wow, that's, that's kinda interesting. I'm gonna say, can you point me in a direction of how we are speaking about, just to make sure that, you know, I don't wander some path that isn't our usual...
Usually just something that you might wanna talk about that maybe happened to the community recently, or maybe if there, it's, yeah, a little open mic, maybe once you get onto a committee, you might say, hey, I wanted to talk about this committee meeting we had, or that type of thing.
Let me see, okay.
Or you can say, nothing, nothing for me today.
No, I'll take a shot at this. 2025 is becoming a very heartbreaking year to start with. We've seen the terrorist attack in New Orleans and we've seen the disastrous thing that happened in Vegas. I would hope that as we move forward, we're vigilant in taking care of our neighbors and that we look to taking care of those folks who could be accidentally blamed or put under suspicion that there's no proof of. I would ask everybody to take a moment and open their hearts and try to find a better way forward so that we can move on from the ugliness and try to get to somewhere where we need to be as a group. Other than that, thank you for having me here and putting up with me so far, that's all I got.
Thank you so much. Councillor Kelly, I'm just looking forward to serving this year and I wish everybody best of luck, thank you.
I'd like to wish everybody Happy New Year and congratulations to the mayor and congratulations to the mayor. And just, I hope that we have a good, a good year coming up and maybe get some of the problems that we've been dealing with resolved and things like that, so.
Thank you.
Welcome back, I'm here for another year, so, three, I guess.
Wait a minute, where are you going?
Whatever, for that, for our serving, as Joan had mentioned, we have a lot of, we have a lot of big things on our plate, budget, we have a police station working on, we got projects at the fire department, there's a big library project going on, we got, we got a lot, lot, lot to work on, so.
We do.
And hopefully we can get that all, keep it moving along in a timely fashion and at the same time, take care of our taxpayers.
Yeah.
That's all.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hello.
I'm so sorry for the cold that I brought in front of all of you, and I hope everybody out in TV land and in the world is doing better than I am today, but welcome, Mr. Watson, and welcome back, Mr. Smith, and congratulations to both the mayor and the vice mayor, deputy mayor, what do you wanna call yourself? Jody?
Deputy.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, deputy.
Yeah. Yeah, deputy mayor, congratulations to you guys both, and I just, I, I feel like this council has people that have really big hearts and have goals to make this community great and not individually, I think we, there's nothing that can be done on this council individually, it's gonna take a team, and so I, I look forward to working together as a team, I think we all respect and value one another's opinions and I think we can do better individually at just like maybe some self-reflection and seeing where each one of us can step up to the plate a little more, I know I will do that, that'll be my commitment for this year is to see how I can help be part of the solution, but I know that we each have a heart to make this place great and to do the right things for our citizens, so I look forward to that, and Happy New Year.
Thank you, and Happy New Year to everybody. I, I recognize we do have a lot of challenges like Jody mentioned and, you know, but I'm looking forward to a very productive year, I think we're gonna make progress, I think our outcomes are gonna be positive, and I think that, you know, at the end of, at this time next year, we'll have a lot in the, you know, on the, on the sheet that we can check off and say, okay, we did this.
Yeah.
And I see that coming, so the challenges don't bother me at all, I know that we can handle them and I will work together to do that, so we have a really good group here and I look forward to working with you all.
Thank you. And I'd like to just thank folks for putting me in this, the mayoral seat again this year, I'm looking forward to that and hopefully can live up to that challenge as well. One thing I did want to mention, because we ended up not having it on our agenda at this meeting, but it's something we need to be thinking about for the next meeting, is our code of conduct, because that is something by ordinance that we do have to every year come up with, a kind of our own code of conduct that we would like to have as a council, so that's definitely going to be on the next agenda for discussion, so.
Penny, you had sent a draft of that to us?
Yeah.
Does everybody have that or was that just from people on the committee?
We had several examples or whatever that we had looked at.
Well, I think we actually included a draft, right, did we not?
So the charter committee, this was a new charter amendment that was passed in November 24, and so when that went to the council, it went with kind of a draft, but it was, that was compiled from looking at many different codes of, codes of conduct for the state.
But that might be a good starting place for everybody to take a look if you sent that out, and then you could say, hey, this is where I might wanna tweak that, you know, at least give us a place to start and have a conversation. Start coming up with something brand new.
We found just a little bit of the history, we found that there was a lot of examples across large and small communities that had such a thing.
Yeah.
And we recognized that we didn't, and the charter doesn't, the charter doesn't address every situation.
Right.
And this kind of fills a gap of, I mean, everybody expects us to act a certain way, this kind of lays it out in a formal document, so we thought it was an important need and we'll, we'll see how it goes.
Yep, always send that.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Thanks for reminding, it's a new thing, my packet is kind of like, just hug and plug and play, because it's, we'll have to make sure that every year it's plug and play with that.
Okay, that's all I had, Happy New Year to everyone and looking forward to our next And our next meeting date, which I already do not have right in front of me.
We either have it all at...
We did make a motion.
It is in here.
It's, uh, January 13th.
January 13th, thank you, 6:00 PM.
So at the, probably at the next meeting, which, well, we'll figure that out at the agenda meeting.
Yep.
The remaining schedule.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, perfect. And I don't believe we have any executive sessions this evening, so what are the wishes of the council?
Make a motion that we call our night and head home before the storm gets worse.
All right, I like that.
Yeah, okay.
Got a second?
Oh, second.
All right, further discussion on that? Bagley?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Lovewell?
Aye.
Smith?
I always wondered if you had about done that one.
Every time. Terrio?
I always wanted to say. Aye.
That's okay, he's still losing.